Good evening. I'd like to call the order of the planning board meeting of April 15, 2014. I'm Jim Fox. The vice chairman, Pat Kerfoot, is taking the night off to recover from a mild flu, but she'll be back soon. And we're ready to start. The first thing is the minutes. Mr. Secretary?
I'd like to move that the minutes of April 1, 2014, the executive session minutes of November 19, 2013, December 17, 2013, January 7, 2014, and February 4, 2014, all be approved as amended.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have no A and Rs tonight? Is that correct?
No, no A and R plans, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you. The next is the continuation of a public hearing. The applicant has requested to withdraw this application, the applicant in Massachusetts Department of Transportation, to remove a 36-inch diameter tree at 700 West Falmouth Highway under Chapter 31 of the Acts of 2006, Chapter 178, scenic roads, code of Falmouth. It's been withdrawn. Motion to accept?
I move. So I'll move.
Second.
If we need one, I'll move to accept.
We got it. All set? All in favor?
I'd like to discuss.
Discussion.
Mr. Curry, did we receive this withdrawal in writing?
Yes, sir.
And I just wondered, did they give a reason?
There's no reason. He simply asked, I would like to withdraw my application and the tree moved on the state DOT at this time without prejudice.
And it's signed by somebody from DOT?
No, it was signed by the property owner who was representing the DOT. That was the person who was here to testify. The DOT is technically the applicant. If you want me to, I can make sure that the state signs off too.
I was just curious to see how that was, because it says that the applicant is the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, and there was nobody here from them last time.
I can follow. I'll call the district committee there and have them sign off too.
Thank you.
While with the club.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. Good idea.
Do you want to table this motion?
I'm all set to move along unless you feel strongly, Richard.
Well, if there's any outside chance, I think we should, until we get the DOT.
It can come back. It's withdrawn without prejudice, so I think we're fine just moving forward.
Well, that's true. Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Done. Next is preliminary discussion. Advocate David Drew to subdivide 4.98 acres into four lots at 85 and 97 Brick Hill Road. Steven Doyle Associates for the applicant. They've got notices to read. Excuse me. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there were 16 of Butters' notices were sent by regular mail on 4/14. It was published in the Falmouth Enterprise on April 4, 2014. According to this, there have been no returns to this point.
For the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Steve Doyle. I'm here with Mr. Drew, who's the property owner at this site. This site is located on Brick Hill Road. I have the board up here. It is on the north side of Brick Hill Road, between Sophie Lane and another 400 feet east would be another small minor roadway. It's a five-acre parcel. Site topography is like to moderate. We have about a 5% or 6% grade throughout the lots, as shown here, and then a depression at the rear of Lot 1. Mr. Drew purchased this property about six or seven years ago and subsequently purchased an additional strip in here, which makes up a lot of, the larger portion of Lot 1, as shown on this plan. So we're proposing a roadway 618 feet in length, which would require a waiver from the 500-foot dead-end street. And we're asking that we be allowed to pave 18 feet instead of 20 feet, which I don't think is an unusual request for a subdivision this size. I reviewed the project with Mr. Curry last week, and he raised some concerns that he felt should be addressed. Number one is, this area here, although it exceeds 60 feet, technically does not meet the bylaw, because we have parcels on either side of it that are designated unbuildable parcels. So we will take this entire portion here, the first 200 feet, and make that part of the layout. So this would all absolutely be buried in the layout, and then we'll drop down to the 44 with standard layout. We're proposing onsite drainage. Roadway infrastructure would be site drainage, typical water, gas, electric utilities, all buried. We are asking for a couple of waivers, actually. The first being a minimum curb radius out here at the entrance, but that's rather a moot point, once we widen this layout area. We won't need that with minimum roadway pavement. Again, we would like to go from 20 to 18. Maximum dead-end street. As I said, we're at 618 to the end now, near feet of roadway. And we could pull that back some, but I think I would still be looking for some relief from the 500 feet. And the next waiver is a streetlight waiver. We have a utility pole here with a functioning streetlight to light the entrance presently. That will remain. And sidewalk waiver. I discussed with Brian, a grass strip sidewalk along one side of the roadway as opposed to a paved sidewalk. There was originally a house, you may remember, out on Brick Hill Road. When Mr. Drew bought it, the house was in pretty significant disrepair, and there was a lot of debris on site. That was all removed, and some regrading done out there for waiting for some further So again, we would widen the roadway here to eliminate these parcels. And parcel on the east side of the roadway actually ran all along the roadway, and as Brian pointed out, effectively created this spike strip, which is not good. So we will definitely remove this area, pull the roadway to the block line series. No spike strip there. A portion of parcel B done around the area where the dash line is here. This portion we would like to keep as an unbuildable lot for two reasons. One, for some buffering there from the abutting properties. And there was some time ago, some, one of the abutters expressed some interest in purchasing that piece. So we would like that little portion of parcel B to remain. That's the proposal before you, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Richard, would you like to go first? Do you have any questions? Ralph? Can I give the answers?
I don't have any. No, no.
Paul? The answer?
No, thank you.
Doug?
Why not? Why don't you want to do the sidewalk?
Thank you.
Just for cost?
Cost, and Dave felt it was more than is necessary for pavement in the area.
Yeah, same question. You mentioned that it would be a grass, sort of a grass sidewalk.
Yeah, when I reviewed that with Brian, he said it's been used a few times now, and seems to have worked out.
Okay, so there is a curb. There's a roadway, then a curb, and then the grass, or?
Yeah, you would, the typical section for a definitive plan would show that there is some grading, as you would do on sidewalk.
Yeah. How is that delineated as, for the sidewalk width? You want to maintain a right-of-way for, whether it's grass, or whether it's concrete, or whatever the surface would be. How do you maintain that as a walkway over time? Is that the property owner's responsibility? Is there some sort of demarcation along there, so that people don't encroach on that?
Well, it would be done in the shoulder of the roadway, first of all, so it would be within the layout, the actual layout of the roadway, which would be private property.
Right.
You know, I guess there's, you know, different ways you could do that. You could use some mini cedar posts. You sometimes see as conservation fencing that's only about 12 inches high. You know, you could mark it that way.
Yeah. It's just that people have a tendency, they see the road, and they figure, okay, this is, I can do what I want up to the pavement.
Right.
And I'd like to avoid that situation, if we could.
We'll look at some way to mark it.
Okay.
Chair? Could put the grassy sidewalk on the eastward side of the road, in which case, nobody would be encroaching from the residence. That would make more sense, in fact, to put it there. If anybody wanted to try to encroach, they could just cross the road.
Yeah.
Plenty of room for a walkway there.
Yeah. I mean, that's up for discussion.
Doug?
Yeah. Could you explain to me the spike strip that you were talking about? I don't understand the.
In other words, we have a parcel now, there's an unbuildable parcel.
Yeah.
It's all along the road right here. And because you have a strip between the roadway and the abutting parcel, obviously, this could never be used to connect to as a roadway over that private property. And I think we actually have a regulation now against that, right? It would still be a private road, and as long as it's a private road, whoever held fee in the roadway, you know, this property owner would have to bargain with to be able to use the roadway.
I see. So you would leave it open to the possibility, if they were to access the road, they could? Is that the idea that?
Well, that's the idea behind the bylaw.
And you condition your approval of a definitive plan, you know, no further loss to subdivide off of Drew Road without a modification of this decision? And it also allows you then to connect adjacent abutting parcels? So you're going to continue this for, you know, have a good answer. You change your rules from year to year.
So does that preclude the idea that maybe the grassy walkway would be on that side, then?
What happened is you bring the right-of-way down to property law, meaning that right-of-way is 44 feet wide, and grass strip inside that road.
My understanding that the spike strip's going away and be incorporated in the roadway, and it's moving east. Ralph?
Yes, Brian. If a subdivision road is built according to the town standards, is it automatically become a town road? So they have to petition for it? Okay. But if it's up to town standards, it's probably generally not a big, a slam dunk, or, I mean...
Usually why you require them to build to these standards, because then they petition the town to accept it as a town lot.
Right. So our standards are what currently is required by the town?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Richard?
Just comment that there's no public interest in having a dead-end road be a public way, because that means, if the town, you have responsibility for roads that only serve small lots. That makes no sense in terms of public interest.
Okay. Anybody else? I have one comment, and it's just preliminary. You've asked for a lot of waivers and moving things with the intention it could be of something coming else. I just want to make sure that we don't do anything permanent if there's a larger subdivision coming in because of more access, that we wouldn't have the right to put some of these things back again. I don't want to lose them forever. Could this be a much larger development on the other side, with 10 or 15 more lots, and now we're waiving sidewalks and everything? We wouldn't do? I just, it sounds like they have the ability to sell more land and add on and come in, and I just, I'm a little uncomfortable. We could waive them now, but do we get another chance when it comes back again? If it comes back?
Once you lay out Drew Road for this four-lot subdivision, you're done.
Okay.
Now, you have the right to look at adjacent properties to make sure the ways are continuous, make sure that there are appurtenances for utilities and whatnot, and technically, it's within your purview.
So we could leave the space for it?
Right.
And don't have to do it? But if we needed to do it a later time, it would all be there, if necessary?
And that's typically.
And we don't have to do that now. I'm just, this is for discussion. I just wanted to see what their thoughts were, because I want, you know, we've got to see what's going in the future. Well, this is just a preliminary discussion. Everyone set? Ready to go to public comment? Anyone from the public like to speak on this? Yes. Please come up and identify yourself.
John McAndrew. 50 Candace. You said there's a 5% grade? Have you actually looked from, from, I don't think it's very anymore, but all the way to here?
Between the 5 and 6.
This is at least two stories higher than this.
Oh, yes. Excuse me. All questions have to come through the chair. You're asking a question whether it's a 5% grade?
Yes. I believe that it is not a 5% grade.
Okay, we'll have him check that. We have a licensed professional engineer, and he's made that statement. We'll make sure he verifies that the next time. We've got a couple shots on this, okay?
Okay.
This is preliminary. We've got your point.
All right.
Do you have another one?
Again, if it is not a 5% grade, and this is at least two stories, this is a very low area. And again, I'm probably only speaking for Lisa, who's the, that abutter, but it is very low.
Comments this way, please.
And her, and all of those houses along there have pools, et cetera. I was wondering if there's any been taken into consideration for that, but I didn't hear it.
Well.
Drainage, et cetera.
We'll take, no, that's why this is a preliminary plan, okay? What we're here tonight is they're take, they're nice enough to come and give us two shots at this. They want to see what we're doing. The next time, we'll have a public discussion, and that's when you can come back again, and we'll listen to everything you have to say. Tonight's your night to give them a little feedback for the first time. They'll come back again, they'll have a discussion, and then, and then we'll, I mean, a hearing and then a discussion. So anything, so you're worried about the slope? Any other issues?
No, that was my concern.
Okay.
Given that I can actually see out my, sit on my deck and see how high that is, it's certainly not 5%.
Okay.
And I'm wondering, you know, are they leveling it? Are they taking down the trees? Are they moving, et cetera, et cetera? That's my, my basic concern.
They heard you. We'll listen to them the next time.
Yeah. How are you going to notify me? Again, by registered letter or something?
Butters' notices?
Butters, the dead end is will be seated by certified now. You'll have to see if there's, but those butters.
Are you one of the director Butters here?
Yes, I am. I'm 150 right here.
Okay, then you'll get a notice.
And you received, you received a notice?
Yes, I did.
And you'll get another one.
So you should get another one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We're in public side, which we've done our board. Richard, we can discuss the slope at another time. We don't need to do engineering here. But thank you. Close the discussion and move on?
Any to the board? Any guidance to me?
Is this in, I have a question. Is this any kind of a coastal pond overlay or recharge area?
This is in coastal pond overlay.
Do you have any plans to use denitrifying septic?
I'm sorry.
Do you have any plans to use denitrifying septic?
We don't at this point.
And it's only four, so we don't really, can't really require four units at a time yet.
And they're at 4.98 acres.
And five's the magic number?
Five is not.
Oh, I do have another request. Are you sure? I mean, you're stating now that you're planning on selling off the parcel B, or would like to do that? That's why it's been called up separately?
No, I'm saying that the reason we left this portion was for some buffering and for conveyance.
Well, I particularly wouldn't want it be left as an orphaned piece of land that the town has to maintain. So if you're not going to, if you want it for buffering, I think you might want to consider it making part of the layout, as you have with a lot of front. That's just my own opinion. So if you definitely had plans to sell it, that would be something else. But we don't like to create lots that end up, that no one owns and just sits there, it just creates issues. So it's something we'd like to avoid. Just for, that's the comments now. All the members of board set?
Who would pay the tax on that?
Who does?
Well, if we include it in the layout, the property owners would own the land. If it gets laid out there as a parcel, they typically, I know several of them that eventually get abandoned, taxes don't get paid, and they sit there forever, and nothing happens.
Well, there'd be some mechanism to make sure that the taxes are paid on.
Well, the town would end up taking it, and it just becomes an orphan.
Mr. Drew would be paying the tax.
Does the board have any guidance for Steven, David, with regards to length of dead-end road, and with the paper, two things, two other things? Is there preliminary, Dick, Fox, and Martin, doesn't find you, road's a preliminary. Doesn't find them, doesn't find you, but do you have any guidance?
I guess I do have one question. What would be the difference if, would these lots all be buildable? If he had to push the street all the way there, would he lose the square footage and lose the buildability? So by waiving this, are we actually creating an additional building lot? That's my question.
If you're.
I mean, we got a 44,000, lot four. It's 44,550. If we would extend this all the way down, or put a cul-de-sac on it, would we, then you would lose, would you lose a building lot? So by granting this waiver, are we actually creating an additional lot? That's a question I have.
Could you ask?
Well, if I were to pull the roadway back and go to a cul-de-sac, the reason for going to a cul-de-sac, I think, would be, in terms of shortening the road, I would have to reduce, apply the reduced frontage, which I allowed by right up to three lots. And if I do that, I'm going to be creating more dog-legged lots. I would still get to four lots.
That's what I was questioning. I'm not opposed, I just wanted to understand, by giving a waiver, are we actually creating an additional lot? Or do you have a methodology of doing it without the waiver? That's my question.
I think it's a less attractive division.
So do I, but that's why I asked. I want to make sure we're not, by wavering it, we're actually creating a lot. You're saying we're not.
Another point to be made is by using this layout, if the land to the east should be developed, then it's a much better situation for a tie-in at that point than it would be if it was a cul-de-sac, or just be a T intersection.
I understand.
I have a question for Brian. What's the reason for the 500-foot limit on the driveway?
Legend has it that your standard pumper truck has 500 feet of hose, and firefighters like to attack from two directions, and so they limit it to 500 feet. So legend has it.
That's a good reason.
Would we get a referral from the fire department? Nope?
It's your subdivision.
Okay.
But that's legend has it.
What about hydrants?
Every 500 feet, seven feet off the road, and then you're not. The hydrants are some that are just acting the fire.
Have you looked around to see where the closest hydrant is at the entrance?
It's across the street from the entrance.
I guess we'll have to get a referral from the fire department. Is that okay?
Do they have good water service up there?
Yeah.
Well, there'll be town water, yeah.
Typically speaking, the board has always required water for firefly. You've never waved water, whereas.
So these are the ones here.
So a hydrant would solve that issue as well, then?
Typically, yeah, it allows you to clear across.
Put a hydrant halfway up the road, you've got a car.
Well, what?
Once we get down to the road, if I intended, to get with the fire department, to put some hydrants in. But one of the questions out there is they've asked for, would the payment take care of it? And just to be fair, does the board have any guidance for the application?
Well, that seems to be the rule of thumb, lately, east side, small driveways.
I myself don't like to see a great big white street with only four houses on it. It'd be overpowering. As long as the ability, the whole, the right-of-way will be there, and if we tie in, if someone else is tied in, we could always go back and make them wind the street, right? We're not.
Most of the layout is done.
Right.
So we're looking at a four-lot subdivision for now, for now, for adjacent. You've got to be 18 feet. The plan says, though, that's heading in the right direction from the board, but we just want to kind of make sure. You get a little guidance when they have asked for a waiver, but at least get a little indication from the board before you're heading.
Right, but the right-of-way's 44 feet.
35.
And they have to come back if they ever come across and want to expand, so.
If it's still a present way, you have a little bit of a chance to then look at what the other application might be doing, and use it another way. And there's some findings you can make, this is to keep it from a five-lot subdivision.
If we're probably signed for a four-lot subdivision, we'll see what's, we'll be across the street.
Okay. Go ahead.
Paul and I have just been looking at the map here, and there's lot one, lot one, and then.
Lot one's not included in this. The first lot's not part of the application. See the darker lines?
Yeah.
1, 2, 3, 4.
It's actually lot one from a prior plan.
Different street. It's not part of the subdivision.
Okay. But they're contiguous lots all owned by the same person.
This property was.
Yeah.
Original purchased by Drew.
Right.
Up here. Then Drew purchased all of this.
Okay.
And we, with an A and R, we created this parcel.
Okay, so there's been an A and R on that. Okay.
So it's everything inside, everything inside the really dark lines are what we're looking at tonight?
Yeah, I understand that, but I was just looking at.
Dark line tonight on this drawing?
Right, this top line here, this parcel A, which is that little, little section there, next to lot one there. I'm just trying to understand the different parcels and how they're divvied up. Okay.
So on the dead-end roadway guidance?
Oh, I was going to rely on the fire department's opinion if that is feasible without adding a hydrant. I know that's a big expense to add a hydrant, so is that, is that the only, that's the only concern I could think of is with regard to that?
So we'll get some input from the fire department in the future.
I'm okay with it if they.
Satisfied with the water condition.
Personally, unless anybody else has other reasons why we should consider that.
And they're going to get back to us about the sidewalk? How are you going to delineate that?
Ralph?
Right. If we do a site visit here, how far in can we go to observe what's, 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 what this property is all about? Is there access now that we could walk the, walk the property in here?
It's pretty much cleared throughout this roadway area.
It is? Okay, thank you. I assume we'll. I assume we'll do a site visit.
You can drive right in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so?
Yep.
Okay, we'll close the discussion and move on?
We'll schedule for a decision. Let's see.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Give them a second to clear out. You're not out of it, Richard. You gotta, you gotta come back, Rich, sorry.
Short timer.
Okay.
Isn't there a hearing?
This is a preliminary discussion.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Then a hearing. I asked the same question before the meeting, so that's why I know. This is a preliminary discussion, then we have a hearing.
Then we have a hearing.
They come to get guidance, and then they come back and ask for you, then we have a public hearing. They, they give us two shots. They were being nice.
Okay.
Next agenda item is a decision. Applicant Sunlight, Sun Elite LLC, modification of definitive plan to waive requirements of the sidewalk on Sunrise Lane and make drainage improvements on Kroll Road. Mr. Secretary, you...
We have a motion?
We have a motion.
So it's a draft motion, April 10th, 2014. Motion that the planning board vote to deny the application of Sun Elite LLC received December 23rd, 2013 to modify the conditions of an approved, approval dated December 8th, 2004, recorded in the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds Book 19648, page 93, for a plan entitled definitive subdivision plan of land located in Falmouth, Mass. for Sunrise Estates, dated June 23rd, 2004, revised September 20th, 2004, prepared by Ferrera Associates, which plan is recorded in the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds Plan Book pages 599, pages 7, 8, and 9, with the following findings and conditions. Findings: The applicant requests to modify the above referenced decision by, one, waiving the requirements for the installation of a sidewalk on Sunrise Lane, and, two, approve or revise roadway profile and construction plan showing pavement and revised drainage on Kroll Road east of Sunrise Lane. The planning board held a series of public hearings and received a great deal of testimony, verbal, written, and electronic concerning ongoing drainage issues on Kroll Road east of Sunrise Lane. The board also heard and considered the written and verbal testimony of residents about the desirability of a sidewalk on Sunrise Lane. The board does not find the testimony on the sidewalk compelling when weighed, weighted against its public safety commitment under its subdivision rules. Sidewalks are for present and future residents and have typically been required by the board for subdivision with the number of lots here. The board also heard testimony from a number of residents about the durability and the maintenance-critical nature of the proposed drainage changes. The board agrees and finds the proposed drainage scheme unacceptable. The gravel portion of Kroll was not constructed as approved by the board on December 8th, 2004. It is not surprising or unexpected then for the drainage as approved not to have functioned properly. Conditions: The applicant is to construct the roadways and attendant drainage and sidewalk improvements as per the plans approved and as conditioned by the decision of the board dated December 8th, 2004, within 30 days of this decision.
Any discussion? Richard?
Go for it.
Paul? All in favor?
Only, excuse me. The one thing I want to point out myself, a learning experience for me, was I wish that when this first came back, we had offered and suggested or considered, or told the, maybe the best way to say it was, asked the applicant to consider paving that section of road that was partially paved. And I know that it's too late for that to be reconsidered now, and I just want to mention that, little learning experience there. I don't know if they would have done that, but I wish I'd encouraged them to think it over. But otherwise, I think we're on the right track with this.
I think in that vein, I think it was wise for us to stay away from kind of doing the engineering, because I have a feeling if it was paved all the way to the end, we'd have the same problems at the other end of it. So I think we're not doing the engineering here, which is how it should proceed.
Okay. And again, this is the only thing on the table, is the things that have been in front of us.
That was asked, yeah.
There's more to go here, but not tonight.
Right.
Anybody else? Call for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? General correspondence. I have nothing in the file. There is none. Do any of the members have any ideas for, for future items that could be on the agenda? Yes?
I know from our discussions and the local comprehensive plan, we would really like to get moving on the transfer of development rights. That is something that keeps coming up in our discussions, and I think we've done such a great job with some of the other bylaws we've done so far. I think this is a good one to tackle, and maybe should, if there are other priorities, maybe this should jump a couple notches up on the priority list.
Brian, would it be appropriate for us to task you to give us a schedule for that in the future? Not necessarily bring it up, but just tell us when you'll be ready?
We will be talking about the commission plan pretty soon, and there's a couple of work. I know it's high on the list of priorities. So hopefully that comes back soon, and I'll schedule it, which is in, I'm hoping, May.
So this is, this is one of the items that we're, we're going to be tasking the Cape Cod Commission to do some work for us. One of the things we're trying to do, based, building on the valuable input we got on Spring Bar's Road, and going back to, we have some vision plans and some things we're talking about, going from, from Main Street to T-Ticket, that's a big jump, but one of the things are, and in particular, is transfer development rights as, as being a tool that we could have on our toolkit to deal with things in the future. So we'll talk about that sometime in May?
If not, I should take the tea, probably May.
Ralph, anything?
Yes. Brian, I wondered if at some future date you could just give us a brief summary of the staff that's being added to the planning department? Just, just as to what, what that's going to entail?
But it's appropriate, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
In May, we'll also be going over your program budget. Usually, that's what I bring back to the board, is schedule your time, and we'll be able to talk about it then with the staff.
And one more item?
Yes?
At what point do you think we'll take up the discussion about the coastal resiliency again?
Coastal resiliency, I know, can be discussed at the local planning committee, and hopeful that leads forward here with the joint dealing with the conservation commission in June.
That's kind of our thing to bring forward.
Okay.
We'll be at the coastal conference, June 5th and 6th. We should have, we see, we keep, save the date. So I'm hopeful to be able to discuss that with the board. Bring together your work program, and we're hoping that's June, a June meeting after the coastal conference, a discussion with the conservation commission, and pursuing of those so-called safety things.
So, so Brian, it sounds like it might be appropriate for sometime in June to, to lay out the targets for the rest of the year?
In May.
In May?
You'll get them in May. You're working on the map. But you can do it every year.
Right, so we'll, we'll look at all the different things we're going to be dealing Well, that brings an end to our agenda items. Any, any motions?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're done.